The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Ely's Radio Shack dealer at 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Regional Planning Commission meeting, June 21st, 2023.
I gotta sit over here, George's camera, it's about 20 pounds to me.
Do you want gestures?
All the order, the Wednesday, June 21st, Regional Planning Commission meeting. And George will lead us to pledge.
Yes, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we start out with public comment? Public comments during the Regional Planning Commission will be for all matters, both on and off the agenda, and will be limited to three minutes per person. Commission reserves the right to reduce the time or limit the total time allowed for public comment. Comments during discussion items may not be accepted from the general public. Commission may prohibit content is comments are woefully disruptive to the meeting, are being slanderous, offensive, inflammatory, irrational, or a nominating to personal attacks or interfering with the rights of others' speakers. And so with that, we will open for public comment. Who first?
Sounds good, moving on.
Do you want to go first?
I know.
Okay. There's plenty of room.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I express a concern in regards to the area where Pine West wants to develop. The old stack that you see down on Avenue, let's see, Avenue B and Eighth Street, lot of graffiti. I don't know where a lot of our politicians came from. They may be used to it, but in this community we're not, and needs to be cleaned up. Whoever's doing that is misfilling the word fun, and they're using CK instead. Here's a picture of three young people there. I don't know if they're the artists, but again, we've got to stop that. Mr. Chairman, I'm requesting a copy of any and all complaints made that involve the Pine West LLC proposed development area and the dates that the complaint was made. I want to know, I would like to know what the complaint regarded, who made it, to which government entity it was addressed, who resolved the concern, the danger was resolved, and a copy of the written action taken to whom it was addressed. The other concern I have also deals with the Pine West area, the convenience store. That awning is about to fall. Been that way for months, and we're just ignoring the issue. That has got to stop. You don't need to cite anybody if you're going to allow this. When an area gets run down, people do want to, want it cleaned up, but when a person is a contractor and then ignore the issue, you folks have a problem. Mr. Chairman, I've asked in the past, oh, by the way, I should have clarified that I'm here as an individual, I'm not representing the board or anyone else. I've asked for months for permits to park RVs. Yet Mr. Carson continues to do that. I want to see his permit. I want to be treated the same under the law. We have a problem with Clark Street. It's a one-way street, yet we have semis driving up that road, one facing traffic, one against traffic, and we have those that are unloading, throwing a ramp across the sidewalk. Can't block that. We need to address that. We have to change the designation again, limit parking, and we need to do that. Mr. Chairman, the Planning Commission City really has not addressed the city co-violations by previous and present members of the Planning Commission, as well as the city councilman and county commissioner. I've given you a list of the past. This is Leah. Her fence is way too high. She doesn't fence off a construction, active construction area. You do not leave construction vehicles, trailers, whatever, on the streets. She's got plenty of property. Everybody else has to stay online. That includes people from the planning committee.
Thanks. Thanks, George.
I want some answers here, as an individual, public fact.
Thank you, George. Any other public comment? We shall close public comment, and we'll move on to item A. Discussion for possible action approval of a city home occupation permit. The applicant is Elizabeth Jacobson, DBA Lux T and D. Property address is 984 Avenue C, Ely, Nevada, and the one type of business is automotive detailing.
She is on the meeting via Zoom. I'm hoping she can hear us. She'll have to unmute herself.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, perfect. Want to tell them a little bit about what you want to do?
So we're doing a mobile detailing and tinting business, mobiley.
So you're just home-based there on Avenue C, and you're out around town?
Yes.
Okay.
When you talk about automotive detailing, you're talking also like businesses when they put their signs on the side of their door of their vehicles, things like that? Or is this just striping?
Yes, we have a trailer that we carry everything in.
I think the question was, what kind of detailing are you doing to the vehicles?
Cleaning, basic cleaning on the inside and outside of vehicles.
Okay.
And tinting the windows.
Okay, so it's just the cleaning, it's detailing, no, no pinstripe detailing, no sticker detailing, anything like that?
No, 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 just cleaning.
Just cleaning.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any problems with approving this, but I do have a concern. Nothing in the paperwork shows ownership, and that's a condition. Is there ownership here? If not, we need to get permission from the owner on record.
Ownership of the home?
Yes.
No, we don't own it, we rent it, but we have talked with our landlord and the owner, and they're supposed to be getting a letter to the city of Ely about us being able to do it here.
We need to have that at the meeting.
Did you get it? They said that they're emailing it to Robin.
I'm sorry, do you want to make your motion conditional upon receipt of the letter within so many days?
Within, I want to know if it was emailed to Robin. I want the date of the email and why that wasn't included in the package.
They were told they needed it, and...
No, the young lady said that, but...
Yes, and they are emailing it to Robin.
We should have it at the meeting. It's pretty sloppy when we don't have it at the meeting. I can't make a good decision unless I have it in the back of it.
No, it's a matter of, okay, let's just talk about process, not...
That's what I'm, that's what I'm talking about, the process is not working. It isn't the first time it hasn't been brought up.
So the approval can be made based on receivable of the letter, correct?
Is Ms. Jacobson representing that they have, or soon will be sending the letter from the landlord saying, getting permission to run the business? Is that what you're saying, Ms. Jacobson?
Um, yes.
Okay. Yeah, so you can make it conditional upon receipt of that letter by email to the clerk within so many days, if you wish to make a motion as to such.
My concern is we've turned other people down before, and that's not fair.
You don't have to make a motion.
I'm not going to, but I just want to make that point. We have to be fair to everybody.
We hear that from you every single meeting, George, or tri-meeting.
Well, I think if they're sending that, and we make a motion conditional, and it's up to, who's going to monitor that? Who monitors that? You will, so it's on your shoulders, so I'm good with that.
If it's not received within 10 days, then it doesn't...
Well, if they have it already and it's ready to go, I'd say within three days. I mean, I'm not going to sit and wait very much. I'd make it conditional on like three, three calendar days.
So by Saturday?
Three calendar days. So what's today, Wednesday?
So by Saturday?
Before Saturday.
If that's your motion, then you can...
That's what I'd say, because if they already have it ready, it's ready to go.
If they have it, it'll be ready tomorrow.
Three, Saturday, Sunday, I'd say within five days, Monday, over the weekend.
Five calendar days?
Five calendar days. Then I would make the motion to approve conditional on that, otherwise, no.
Because she's representing they have it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I guess I don't understand what the problem is.
Well, they don't, they're having a business out of home, but they don't own the home, but they're getting permission from the owners, because they just rent it. So they're just going to get that letter in by Monday to say that they're okay to do that.
Only to enter into these folks', the laws. Yeah, our approval is conditional upon receiving that letter from the owner.
By end of day, Monday.
You buy Monday.
Because verbally, she's representing she has permission, but the motion is that the board wants written proof of the permission.
Point of order. She really has grace from these people. Otherwise, no, null and void, whatever.
And you moved to...
Yeah.
I'll second that.
George has a question.
George?
The lady just stated that it was emailed to Robin. If that's the case, it's at City Hall, which means it's available tomorrow.
She said they were emailing it to Robin. I don't believe they said they sent it yet, correct?
Um, yes, that's correct.
What's your point, George? It's available tomorrow, therefore?
If it had been emailed, it would be at City Hall, and we'd have it tomorrow. But if it hasn't been emailed, then...
But the motion was five, or five calendar days.
Within five, within five days.
Because she said she didn't, hadn't done it yet, so give her Monday, and if she doesn't have it, then it's dead, whatever.
And did you second the motion, Rob?
Then she'll have to have it by next meeting, so...
Did Rob, Rod second it?
Rod seconded.
And I'm closing the discussion.
Okay, I guess we'll bring this to a vote, that it will be approved upon approval. It's five days within today's date.
By the end of Monday.
By the end of Monday. And, okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, it passes with that condition.
So Elizabeth, please just make sure that they email that to me. If you need my email address, just call me tomorrow at City Hall.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And let's move on to item B. Discussion for possible action approval of a city home occupation permit. Applicant is Scott Lee, DBA Clean Green Contracting. Property address is 2351 Campton Street, Ely, Nevada, 89301. Type of business is landscape contracting.
So this one, the gentleman was here, but is being withdrawn because he owns a commercial building on Altman Street that he is actually going to be working out of, so he doesn't need the home occupation permit.
Okay. So then, item B is being withdrawn.
I have a comment. On item B and the paperwork, there's no ownership or permission from the owner. The fact that he's got a commercial building is fine, but the application does not state that.
And it was the same thing. I told them both, George, they were notified, so...
If they're notified...
They would have got it to me, I could have brought it to the meeting and handed it out, but I can't do any more than that.
Okay.
Okay?
You know, when the agenda's made up, that's the deadline.
No, there are things that come in after the fact, but it's, that's not open for discussion right now.
Close item B, open to item C. Approval of a county home occupation permit. Applicant is Jeffrey Brendan, DBA Star Tactical Shop. Property address is 98077th Street East, Ely, Nevada, 89301. Type of business is firearms and public safety supply.
I've had a business in Ely over on Murray Street since 2017, went to uniforms in prison, Sheriff's Department. I'm a sergeant at the prison also, so most of my business is just mainly law enforcement and public safety, firearms and that. I just recently lost the lease because I had a firearms license, and the insurance company, the owner of the building, where I've been at, they wouldn't keep the insurance on because I had a firearms license. I don't store firearms there, they just didn't like the fact that I had a firearms license. So I'm just trying to get approved for the home-based business, because it's not my main source of income. I just, like I said, I do, it's not open to the public all the time. I mainly just do uniforms and firearms. I don't see, I don't store a bunch, most of my stuff is special order, so I don't store a bunch of stuff. I don't store, you know, a bunch of ammo, or I don't do reloading, store powder, anything like that.
Went by our place yesterday, so I didn't see a lot of, a lot of outbuilding.
No.
I thought they'd had a, had a business over on Murray.
Yeah.
Now, is your business going, like on C, it says 98077th Street East and 417 Murray. Where's your business going to be out of?
The 98077th Street. The 417 Murray was the, where I used to be.
Was the original one.
Right.
Okay, so you're, it's going to be out of 98077.
Correct.
Okay.
Like I said, most of the stuff is, I mean, people I work with, friends in the Sheriff's Department, so I don't plan on, you know, having a bunch of extra traffic out there or anything.
And from what you told me, the state license cannot be transferred until you have this approval.
The federal firearms license, they will not transfer it until I have the approval. And it is a, it's, I have a manufacturer's FFL, which just means in ATF language, I can put together a gun. It's not like manufacturing, like they don't have a bunch of machines and building stuff. It's just their definition is, you can put together a gun, you're a manufacturer.
If you sell it, right?
Right.
Okay. Okay. I just want to clarify. I think you're just relocating due to lack of insurance, basically, and that complies with FFL, ATF, so I moved to, I don't have any discussion on that. I moved to approve.
Second.
Okay. Jesse moves to approve, and George seconds, and let's put this to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? You're approved.
All right.
Forget license. Okay, we move on to item D. Approval of a parcel map. Applicant, Gunn family living trust, wishes to divide parcel 010-750-16 into two before parts. The address and/or general location of the property is near Jennifer Hills Drive, Country Road, Ely, Nevada, one-quarter section southeast, one-quarter section 21, township 16 North Range 63 East.
Good afternoon, Reverend Earl with Solaris LLC. I'm representing the Gunn family trust. And what it is, we have an existing lot on Jennifer Hills, and we're just going to divide it basically in half. They're not exactly equal, we're within 40 or 50 square feet of being equal, so we're just taking one lot, making two lots.
Greg, point out the two lots.
This is, this is the second page. Okay. And which is the lot, which is the parcel you're dividing right from there?
We're taking this big lot here.
And splitting and putting the cul-de-sac in?
Cul-de-sac's already there.
Okay.
So everything's existing, we're just going, we're just putting this line in, make two parcels.
What does the circle represent?
That is the fire access and access to the parcels.
Turn around for fire trucks.
That's existing on the original map.
There's no buildings on that property?
There's no buildings yet.
But there will be?
Yes, single-family residence.
And those are 2.78 apiece, so they're zoning out there for that?
Yes, exceeds the zoning by quarter acre.
Okay. You can approve that.
Pretty straightforward. Pretty straightforward on that.
Is there water sewer available for those folks?
No, it'll be septic and well.
Are they within 400 feet of the city limits?
City limits?
Yes.
That I don't know.
You need to check, NRS.
There's no water service there.
It's in 400 feet.
Is this, is this property out, is it within the city limits or out of the county limits? It's in the county.
Okay.
And no, they are not within 400 feet of the city limits, they're south of the bypass, so...
Okay.
Makes it show us the community college there. What is that zone? Is that a, what is that zone as residential, or is it 333 or what is it? I don't remember. But I saw something. But it's definitely, it's not R85 or anything like that up here.
No, because it beats the zoning, it's two and a half acres minimum.
I just wanted to be spot zoning in a minute or something.
Yeah, no zone, no zone change is, is being performed.
Okay. Motion approved?
Yeah, seconded.
Okay. George moves to approve, Jesse seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is approved.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, and next, item E. Approval of boundary line adjustment. Applicants Carter Griffin Incorporated and CG Land Holdings LLC wish to adjust the boundary line between accessories parcel numbers 013-143-04 and 013-143-05 to allow for new development. Address and/or general location of properties is 272 West Seventh Street South, London, Nevada, Section 4, 5, and 32, 33, Township 11 North and 12 North Range 62 East.
Come on up. I'll let you tell them what you'd like to do, and I'll help out from there.
All right. So I am Blaze Griffin. Did I do all right? Okay. I am Blaze Griffin, representing and owner also or part of, one of the owners of CG Land Holdings and Carter Griffin Incorporated. Both there, two entities owned by the same group of people with the same ownership, so just thought that might be important to know. We, of the two parcels, we're trying to adjust the lines to allow for, our plans to build a new farm equipment dealership. If you've been through Lund's headed to Las Vegas recently, you've seen a big mound of dirt. The dirt has started to fly, but we're trying to get all of the ducks in the row before we can get a building permit and get all of that going. So in order to do that, we need to adjust this boundary line between the two parcels to allow, I think we're trying to create an 18-acre parcel out of this in order to build our dealership on. So that's, that's the quick summary. Any specific questions that you have for us?
The parcel does face 318?
It is.
Thank you.
I got a question for you.
Yes.
Did Max catch up with you?
He did.
Okay. Do we need to make that known here?
Yeah, it sounds like on, on one point of the, of the application, it says Highway 6 on, on one of the sections, right? Which is, which is not correct, it should be Highway 318.
It's just 318.
Yeah, there's, we're far away from Highway 6, so that must have been an error.
Yeah. What is that rolling?
318.
318?
Yes. Yeah, Highway 318 is the one that they're facing.
And is the, the, the property address is 272 West Seventh Street South, Lund?
That's correct. I'm sorry, for the record, Dave Miller, Basin Engineering.
If they have, in the zoning, and they have the building planning department here, where they have Highway 6, and if you just say it's Highway 318, there's no issue there? It's not 6. Right, okay, just do that now?
Yeah, in the, in the action item that's described, it gives the exact property address and the correct legal description for that property address, correct? So we have a typographical error on Highway 6.
That's just in the application paperwork?
Yeah. So on number nine, on the very first page, building planning, it says access traffic Highway 6, it should be Highway 318?
And number three.
And number three?
Yeah.
So 3, 6, and 9 need to be Highway 318.
Yes. That's a little ways away.
And that's just on your summary of the findings of facts, is all that is?
Okay, we can make those adjustments on the application paperwork, and just resubmit those in after approval.
But it sounds like they're going to be accepted here, because everywhere else it says direct access to Highway 318.
Okay. So the boundary line adjustment, you're moving over where that was 05 here, but because you're extending your C3, you're just scooting that up here?
It's currently all open range.
This is all 05?
Yeah, our next item number will, is going to, to adjust commercial.
Okay.
So number F here.
So boundary line adjustment now?
Boundary line adjustment now, and zone changes up shortly on the agenda.
I don't have any issue with the boundary line adjustment.
No, I don't either.
Let's move on to the next one, so.
Make motion, approve.
Second.
Okay. Jesse moves to approve, and George seconds, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Boundary line passes. We'll move on to, close of item B, open to public hearing and decisions. Public hearing on, for the consideration of a proposed application for reclassification of zoning of property located in or near Lund, Nevada. Applicants are CG Land Holdings LLC and Carter Griffin Incorporated. Represented by Basin Engineering, they are requesting the subject property to be changed from old-5 open range to C3 highway commercial district. The subject property addresses and/or general location are...
Yeah, our next item number will, is going to address commercial.
Okay.
So number eight here.
So boundary line adjustment now?
Boundary line adjustment now and zone change is up shortly on the agenda.
I don't have any issue with the boundary line adjustment.
No, I don't either. Let's move on to the next one, so.
Make motion up here.
Second.
Okay. Jesse moves to approve it. George seconds. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Boundary line passes. We'll move on to close of item E, open to public hearing and decisions. Public hearing on for the consideration of a proposed application for reclassification and zoning of property located in or near Lund, Nevada. Advocates are CG Land Holdings LLC and Carter Griffin Incorporated. Represented by Basin Engineering, they are requesting the subject property to be changed from old dash five open range to C three highway commercial district. The subject property addresses and original locations are near the intersection of State Highway three eighteen, State Road three eighteen, and Third Street South Lund. About accessories parcel numbers are zero one three dash one four three dash zero four and zero one three dash one four three dash zero five prior to boundary line adjustment. Upon approval of the boundary line adjustment, and the new zoning will only apply to what is designated as parcel two on exhibit A of the proposed application. So public hearing on that?
Same correction to the Highway six reference on the, the summary of the application should be three eighteen? Or in this case it is not?
Hold on.
Same, okay.
Three eighteen.
Okay.
I'll go with Jennifer in the morning and we'll make sure what I mean is clear.
Okay, any, anything else on the public hearing?
Parcel, above it, that's oh five then, staying oh five? And the one below is that oh five here too?
So this, we're, okay, so this is the one that we want to
Adjust.
Adjust to commercial?
What we'll do here is we will close the public hearing side of it and open to discussion for possible actions.
Sure.
And this is the approval of a proposed application for reclassification zoning property located on or near Lund, Nevada. Advocates are CG Land Holdings LLC and Carter Griffin Incorporated, represented by Basin Engineering. Requesting the subject property to be changed from zero five open range to C three highway commercial district. Subject properties and addresses and original locations are near the intersection of State Highway three eighteen, SR three eighteen, and Third Street South Lund, Nevada. Accession parcel zero one three dash one four three dash zero four and zero one three dash one four three dash zero five. Prior to boundary line adjustment, upon approval of boundary line adjustment, the new zoning will only apply to what is designated as parcel two on exhibit A of the proposed application, that for discussion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, you have oh five here and what's below here? Is that oh five two?
Below there, we don't actually own that piece.
No, but who, what is the zoning down there?
It's BLM open range.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm just trying to make sure we aren't doing spot zoning, but I like commercial along the highways. I mean, rather than open range, I'd like to see the commercial along the highways. But I just want to see if it's oh five, commercial oh five, then maybe, you know, something to look at. But yeah, I, it's public land, not BLM, public land here.
Yes, public land. That's if, for reference too, that's, there's the cemetery, we call it Cemetery Road.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's on the corner, so we're bordering the Cemetery Road, which is that Third Street South Lund.
Okay.
And then Highway three eighteen. And so is that corner.
Okay. Sounds good, thank you.
Now on this page showing your zone change, what is this piece around? Just curiosity.
That is actually land owned by others. There's, I think, three or four, five acre parcels down, down in that area that are also, I think are open range, but.
And they won't be affected by, it's only that?
Correct, it's only, right there is the only piece that we're talking about changing the zoning on. And then the little, the little cutout on this side is the cemetery is.
So what is that zone, did you know?
I think it's open range, but I don't know.
No, off the top of our head, we don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, our, it's away from our project area that we're looking at changing the zoning for.
Right, I was curious because I live down there and I, I haven't gone to look to see, oh, who owns that? Thought maybe you could tell.
So just to clarify, parcel two is for the new farm equipment dealership?
Yes, that's where we'll put the, the new dealership.
Motion to approve.
A second.
Okay, George moves to approve. Jesse seconds.
I'll second. Jesse second, seconded.
He second's the second?
Oh.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
To get this, your property now, you'll have more inventory, so I mean, your price can go down, economics of scale?
We hope so. Sell, stack it deep and sell it cheap as well.
It isn't working now, is it? It's not working right now.
It's tough, but we do need some more space, so we are excited about trying to, we're going to go from two and a half acres in town to eighteen acres outside of town.
That'll be a lot nicer.
Hopefully a little.
A little more mobility. Good luck.
Yeah, it's going to be an undertaking, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. And we'll close that item, close the public hearings and decisions, and we will open for discussion for possible action. Item G, approval of minutes for reading time for mission meeting held on May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. You didn't find anything?
I read.
I didn't find anything either. George, you got anything? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
Right.
Right, yes.
Okay. How to make the motion to approve? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Jesse seconds, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Move on to public comment. Period of voters in the comments in the general public, if any, and decision of these terms, no action may be taken upon a matter of reason, item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken.
Jess? Jess, are you going up?
No.
I thought you, I saw you move.
No, I, I'm good.
Okay.
I have some things I put in writing, I think. That's what they require here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a member of the board, at the last meeting, I asked that we put on the agenda items from board members, reports, that would be put on there. I also asked for the inclusion of, for discussion possible zoning concerns for future agenda items, discussion and action. That wasn't put on there. We need to address that. If not, I want to know why not. It was on there before and now it's been taken off. What are we here for? Now, as a private individual, if you look at the minutes, I'm not gotten one answer to all my questions. And we need to address that. I'm no different than anybody else. I'm in politics for a long time. I always answered, one way or the other. Sometimes you don't like it, that's just the way it is. But we have NRSs, we have city codes, we have county codes, and things are not going the way they should be. Mr. Chairman, nothing's been done in regards to the ADA concern I had on Avenue D and Fourteenth Streets, between Fourteenth and Fifteenth Street, state project. Federal regulations, all new projects, ADA compliant, not happening. Same with Great Basin Boavard, that's in the minutes, just another repeat. I've asked for a list of properties and individuals that the city has permitted and allowed to park RVs on the city lots and city streets while living in them. All of those permits are approved by the planning commission. I have approved one since I've been here, and I don't think any of you folks have. Yet they're all over the place, and yet I put in requests for a permit and I'm going nowhere for close to two years. The discrimination's got to stop. Either you start enforcing the city code, no trailers more than twenty-four hours on the city street, or you treat me just like anybody else, give me a doggone permit so I can make a living. And also in that regards, I've asked for the city council, utility board, whether some of those that are on the streets, if they don't have permission from the owner or they don't own the lot, if they're paying the proper utility fees, water sewer, landfill fees. We don't know that. That needs to be addressed. I'm getting a little uptight, and I want the information. As a public official, if I don't get it, I'm going to use NRS one ninety-seven point one nine zero, obstructing a public officer. NRS one ninety-seven point zero nine zero, interfering with the public officer.
But you're commenting as a private citizen, correct, George?
Yes.
The last two items, no, excuse me. I thought I was clear on that.
No.
Okay, let me clear.
You're not going to withdraw? It's public comment, it's not for?
Listen to the public comment, the last two items were as a public official.
No, we can't put it that way.
First, when he was speaking as a board member, I was for the board regarding zoning and reports, and then he started, he spoke as a private citizen after that.
Okay.
And there was no change there.
Okay.
Okay. Just for clarification, so everybody knows, when we get these zoning changes applied or the law splits, that sort of thing, one of the very first things I do is make sure that the split or, you know, border boundary adjustment is going to be compliant with the zoning regulations that are on that current plot. So I'm obviously not looking at any sort of future work, but whatever's proposed, we make sure that it meets the minimum criteria. So if you look in my summary that I sent everybody, I wouldn't approve something if it was, you know, unless it was an error, but I wouldn't approve something intentionally if the zoning didn't match what the request was. So, and two, we have a member of this board come to the city council meeting last month, last plastic city council meeting that we had, and they were talking about how there was a zoning enforcement case against the property on Avenue G, I believe. So I would just advocate that anybody who's a member of the public trust, be accurate with your information. If you're going to stand up and make public comment and it's entirely misinformation, then I would just recommend that you gather the facts before you talk. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
No.
Probably does not too, that's my recommendation. You can speak to him afterwards.
Okay. Okay.
And if needed in the future, you can put it on the agenda for whatever discussion needs to be done.
Okay. I was just getting a clarification on something.
And just a reminder, anything that any of you want to put on the agenda needs to be to me at my office by the first of the month.
Can be requested at a public meeting then.
You can come to me, I need whatever backup material you're going to put with it or how you're wanting something worded. I can't just do it off that. So you can get whatever you're wanting on the agenda by the first of the month to me.
Good.
Okay, can I just make a public comment then?
Yeah.
I got it up there too.
Yes.
Best if you do.
Camera's rolling, so be nice.
Get my good side, George.
You don't want to bend over.
Okay, I'm looking at some things I know as on RPC before. We have, I know some home occupations that are not compliant, that people aren't living there, they aren't doing business there, but they made a kind of grease monkey junkyard out of the places. And I guess they'll have to write a letter, you need it in writing or something to do that, to get the address. But then there was also another one that I know we had approved before, and I see that was only going to have two or three vehicles at its very most, and no tires, no junkyard, and it's turned to a junkyard again and about a hundred vehicles. And they were supposed to put up a fence, and it's changed ownership, and it's done that. And another one, it's a junkyard that I consider that is coming into town and amongst a couple of them, that the fence has fallen down and it's a junkyard. And I just spent three thousand miles going to Montana over to South Dakota and back through Wyoming, and I never saw a town look as ratty as this one. And I know it was home occupation, I've talked about it before, I guess, but you need somebody to write down the name and address?
You file the initial complaint with the building department normally for the violations, and then if they, when they get time, they investigate.
The whole thing was, I went with, hoping the person would do what they said they would do, and they have totally violated. And people that opposed it said, that's what it's going to turn into, and it turned into that again.
Right, so.
So there's been like three of them that has gone through. That's why the mechanic type shops, workshops are the tough ones for me to look at.
Sure.
They start building up quite a number of vehicles.
Right, so if you believe they're in violation, then you just start the,
From what we voted on.
You start the investigation process and then with the building department, and then if they have questions of need for the legal process, then I'll.
Do I have to give an address and a name or do I have to write a letter?
I'm not sure how formal.
I can give you a name and address and I'll put my name right to it, right there.
We generally accept complaints in writing.
Okay, I'm just going, I just don't want to get into a long lengthy letter, just here it is.
Yeah, that's sufficient.
And sometimes George will have pictures of it if you're able to snap it.
Oh, yeah, I got.
It's clear which,
It's just getting worse, worse, worse.
Which line of sight to the property you're referring to or whatever. Because sometimes something in the rear may not be a violation.
No, I'm saying right on the street.
Yeah. It's on a case by case basis.
Okay.
Okay, and then your public comment. Close public comment and we'll move on to adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, Jesse says adjourned, George seconds, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We're adjourned, with the exception of Greg.
Home occupations, it seems that they can be reviewed in the July. If I, am I able to send out like a list of the home occupations for this?
This has been a Georgetown production, George Chatchis reporting.